Order the work session for September fourth, turn it over to Mr. Blackfeet.
All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cody for the July financials, and we'll go ahead and jump right into the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we will start with our July budget amendments. We had a decrease of seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars for the dyslexia grant, and a decrease of nineteen thousand for the CTAE industry certification grant. We saw an increase of four hundred dollars for the state hygiene grant, and an increase of forty-seven hundred dollars for the math and science supplement grant. And then finally, we had a decrease of two hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars for the school security grant. And so I did want to point out that currently we have two separate school security grants. So the one you see here is a multi-year grant that we were awarded last year in the amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So the decrease reflects the expenses that were incurred last year, leaving us with a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred to spend this year. So then if we look at the overall activity for July, revenues came in at one point two percent of budget. This is very typical for this time of year because our property tax collections, of course, have not yet begun, and a portion of our July and August QBE revenues were accrued into last fiscal year. Our expenses were at three point six percent of budget, and the overall budget position in July was eight point three percent. Regarding our sales tax collections, we received June collections in July in the amount of three million five hundred eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Because those collections were for June, they were recorded in the fiscal year 2024 East Bloss financials. For our comparison, sales tax collections received in July of 2025 were one point seven six percent higher than July of 2024. Is there any questions on the financial report? So then for our July investment analysis, we earned interest in July in the amount of five hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Any questions for Ms. Cody on the financials? All right, if there's no questions on that, we'll move, move ahead with the facilities update.
All right, good evening, everyone. We will start with our East Bloss projects, and we'll start with the Performing Arts Center. Mr. Holtham, you had requested and asked for to see some pictures.
Yes, sir.
So I have a few. All right. This is the main entrance of the Performing Arts Center as it stands, that was as of day before yesterday. And this is a view once you come through those, once you come through those, that, this is the main, it's once you come through that glass, those glass doors, there's gonna be a little lobby area, and a picture on the left, this is the view from the first floor. And the stage will be up here in this area up front, and then this is the view from the second floor balcony that sits right behind the main portion. On the left, that is the balcony, on the left, second floor balcony, on the left side of the auditorium, and this is the right side of the auditorium, balconies are being built. And again, this is the balcony that at the rear, on the second floor, the rest of the balcony. And then that's just a look at the balcony, and this first picture on the left, that's just a look at it from when you're on the ground floor level looking up. And this is the floor plan, let me show it to you in this one, it's a little bit clearer. As you'd asked about like dressing rooms, restrooms, different things like that, and this kind of gives us a... Are y'all able to see that?
Yep.
And also too, this is on their website as well, I can see the link, but the dressing rooms are here in the purple. And they got some storage areas up there in the green, a green room in the purple right here. Then over here in the yellow is your gang restrooms for men and women, lobby area out here. And again, like I said, it will have the retractable seating so that you can use it as a banquet area or for performances. This is the website, and this is a live view, so if you ever want to go on and see if the guys are working or not, just click on this. Go to this website, and you can see this is a live view that runs twenty-four seven. And then this is what it's slated to look like when it's all said and done.
How many will it seat?
A thousand.
A thousand.
It's gonna seat a thousand people, and again, it'll have retractable seating, so if you want to have a big banquet or a dance or something in there, you could do it. Or if there's a performance on the platform or stage up front, the seats will go back out and...
Ms. Haywood, I think there's, I think there's four different, on this site, I believe there's four different types of arrangements listed.
It is. That's the floor plan, level one.
There we go.
You've got level two. And it's just showing the balconies here in the blue that are going around. You've got the banquet setting, if you decided to do it in a banquet setting, that's a little big. But with the seating retracted back here. And then the orchestra setting. Is that view. So it's progressing very well, again, January, February should be the date that it is completed. And that's it, finished product.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the, the first floor floor plan showed a platform. Is that one that is able to be moved out of the room, or is that permanent? It almost looks like it must be able to be moved.
I'm thinking it's gonna be able to be moved, you have stage, platform.
The stage area is, it can, depending on the seating arrangement, it could be no stage or the orchestra.
Right.
Can, you know, have a certain size stage, or it could be decreased down to just if you're just gonna have a speaker or something.
Okay, so, so the stage is there with the orchestra setting.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a flexible stage, the way I understand it.
Okay. Maybe like a modular?
Yeah.
Any questions? All right. Also, Glendale elementary replacement, the other East Bloss project, it's moving along well. Again, the site clearing outside of, we're still waiting on Georgia water and soil conservation. There's just a roadway, we have one roadway that is totally clear, cleaned out, all debris is gone, but we're waiting still on them to give us authorization to get the rest of the roadways. But all of the land where the school will go, the parking lot will go, playgrounds, everything, all of that is completely cleared out, and all of the, all of the debris has been hauled off, but we're still waiting, Mr. Tooten's still waiting on the Georgia water and soil conservation to give us the permission to clear out that, the other drive, other driveway. And it's, hadn't rained in a while, it's dry back there, so if you'd like to visit, you can definitely go back and, go back and check it out.
Okay, can we go back to the Performing Arts Center?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've been...
No, 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 you're fine.
What about, do we see concessions anywhere, or something for, I, I, we may have...
The lobby area is not, see where the ticket, the concession is located.
Tickets, concessions, in that lobby area.
This doesn't display the lobby very good, it's gonna be a very, I guess, it's, the lobby's almost gonna be in a way that you could have a function out there.
Right, okay. What about, is there, is there a full kitchen there too, or is it, like if you have a banquet, is all of that gonna be brought in?
My understanding is the college did have some plans for their hospitality side of things that are in conjunction with the, the other Crawford Center they have. They, they share a service yard, and I don't, I don't know how all that's gonna work, but it's...
Anything else?
Seth, thank you.
All right. So we will move on to our, our local capital projects. BHS Field House is progressing well. Not a whole lot of pictures, but they are ninety-five percent done with the brickwork. And it's the same brick that's on the current school and current Field House, so it's all in unison, looks, looks really good. This is the interior, the one on the left, it looks like a pond in there now because of all the rain we were getting, and, and got to get it out, but anyway, this is the interior of it right here, and on the right is the training room. And this was a very interesting picture. Here, they are pouring the concrete, concrete insulated roof on yesterday. So it's, it's progressing very well, and Monday, next week, they'll start pouring the, putting the membrane over the top of that concrete roof. And they'll start drying in and starting the metal framing on the inside. And again, like I say, it's progressing well, projected December finish date. And then our last local project, the Board of Education Office, Wing Three is complete, it looks really good. All of the staff members are in their office spaces. As far as Wing Four goes, we have started demolition and abatement on Monday, August twenty-fifth, that's going well. So it's moving along pretty well, and it's, it'll go a little bit quicker than the other wings because there's not nearly as much office space as some of the other wings had, so it should go relatively quickly. Any questions on Board Office or BHS Field House? All right. Now we'll take a look at the GUD report. And if we will look at, this was the much anticipated. We were waiting to kind of see, and as you can see, we took in three million five hundred ninety-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, which was a hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred forty dollars and sixty-three cent, more than we took in this time last year. Again, it's not what kind of we expected, and I'd venture to say that this probably does not include a month's, thirty-one days of buckies. It's not, I don't know how their billing cycle or whatever works, but I would assume that it's probably not. So I guess we just have to wait till next month and see what next month looks like compared to the other months. But any questions on the GUD report? All right, and lastly, I'm asking the board to approve James W. Buckley and Associates Architectural Firm as the architect for Goodyear Elementary renovations, GA Building renovation, stadium improvements, and other appropriate projects. They will also become the primary architectural firm for updating the Glen County Schools facility information on the Georgia Department of Education Capital Outlay Program portal. Their fees will not exceed six percent of the construction cost. And the RFQ was posted on the Glen County Schools website on June second. All submissions were due by two PM on July fourteenth, and we had a total of eight architectural firms that submitted proposals to work for, work with Glen County Schools. Any questions?
This is a recommendation from, uh, Mr. Tooten.
You said, is...
Is this a recommendation from Mr. Tooten?
No, no, this is, we had a committee. We formed a committee.
Mr. Tooten still is doing the, the Glendale Replacement School, as well as, there is some renovation projects of schools that he designed that we're, we're gonna continue with his services, but he, he, he is asked to, you know, that he not, you know, continue long-term as, you know, on a lot of projects. So we do have some things that we need to get started with East Bloss Five particularly, and so we, we advertised, and like Mr. Haywood said, had eight firms submit, and we had a committee of six people that scored the submissions, and then we interviewed the top two candidates.
But this will be his replacement in the future.
He's, he, Mr. Tooten is still gonna continue to do work.
Does Buckley have a presence in Glen County?
Yes.
At office?
Yes, they have an office on St. Simon's Island.
Remember before, when, I think when, and I mean...
There was Swainsboro originally.
Yeah, well, there was a, when there was all the stuff between Buckley and Mr. Tooten and stuff, there was, I remember, on some projects, there was a little bit of, of an issue with the responsiveness and that sort of thing, and they weren't here locally, I don't think, at that time. So that's why we're making sure we're comfortable with the fact they're gonna be here and available and all that kind of stuff.
They've been here in Glen County since two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
And...
They have an architect that is here in Glen County, as well as a, another designer that are here, and then they have their office in Savannah that, that also services this area now.
Okay.
But yes, their primary office is in Swainsboro, but they've moved most of their operations to Savannah.
I can give a little background for our newborn members. Y'all certainly deserve to know, the Buckley Group bought Mr. Tooten's practice many, many, like around two thousand ten maybe. They bought his building, they bought his practice, and he worked for them. He was our architect as a member of that group, but then they had something, I don't want to say disagreement because it may have been completely applicable, but he bought them out. The people that bought him, he bought them out. So he's expressed his, he wants to retire, I think that's a fair statement. And so the Buckley Group and their whole operation is not unknown to this district because Mr. Tooten actually worked for them for years. So they're longstanding, their main office is Swainsboro, they're doing a lot of work in Savannah, and I'm not sure where they are on St. Simon's, but they have an office. Does that kind of give you a little background?
His name was associated with them, and him, years ago.
Well, actually, Mr. Tooten worked for them for years, and then he bought out of that, and he became a solo practitioner.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the Title IVB, Twenty-First Century Grant.
So, so good evening. Tonight, we're asking for you to just hear an update and proposal. You will be required at your, at some point, hopefully, to approve the funding for the Twenty-First Century CCLC after-school programs. Just to kind of make sure you guys as board members are aware, in July, at the end of July, the State Board of Education voted and actually was appropriated the funds to continue with the Twenty-First Century programs. And so when that happened, the State Board then reached out to the sub-grantees, Glen County Schools, and said, "Funding is coming to be able to continue these programs." So this is year two for us. Each year is a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant at K-two, a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant at three-five, and a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant at grade six. For our elementary, K through two and three through five programs, we serve this in, at Altam Elementary, Goodyear Elementary, and Burrows Mallett. For our sixth-grade after-school programs, we are in all four middle schools. Students go to approximately one hour of academic enrichment support type of activities, and then they'll move to the Boys and Girls Club location for those extracurricular and enrichment activities. Students are afforded an afternoon snack, and there could be a meal that goes along with this. In order for us to move forward with year two of the grant, we have to first present it to you, the Board of Education, and we, we will, we look for your support in approving the funding at an upcoming...
I was the project manager for the Twenty-First Century from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve. So I'm very, very well-versed on this program, it's, it's great.
I'm familiar with the two.
It's wonderful.
This is the, the first time we had the middle school?
Last year was the first time we had a middle school, and just for your knowledge, Mr. Jackson, we had fifth-grade students that kind of were matriculating, going to middle school, and we had families that reached out and said, "Is there something for them at the middle school level?"
This is exactly like the one I had, I mean, it's exactly. I had three middle schools, I had four, I had the same elementary schools, we used the Boys and Girls Club, the whole thing. So is this different since you're saying they're just now adding on the middle, I mean, I did it for years.
So we hadn't had a middle school program here. We did K-two, we did three-five, they would go away to the Boys and Girls Club at the high school for those types of activities, but this is actually at the middle schools.
Yeah, 'cause I got the one at Jane Mason started, and the one at Needwood, yes. Yeah, so we're saying, I'm, I'm confused.
I think there was, I think there was a lapse in time, there was a few years, there was a few years that, that middle school students were not included, and last year they were brought back in.
Oh, okay.
It's a three-year cohort, and so it's approved as the cohort, so the two previous three years, we only had elementary schools.
Oh, okay, so when I, right after I left, because when I was doing it, I had elementary and middle.
So, so last year, we brought, was it last year, year before, we brought the middle school?
Back in. Yeah, I had gone middle.
How, how was the participation level in the middle school?
It was a struggle to start. We had two middle schools that I would say had no problem recruiting kids and having attendees. Transportation is the biggest struggle that we've had, so we have added at the other two middle schools the opportunity for evening transportation to help with our participation.
When did y'all start advertising for the middle school?
We've been advertising...
For the summer, going into the summer.
Yeah, so we've been advertising as part of our back-to-school newsletters and things that have gone home. All four middle schools are actively recruiting students right now.
But that gap, when the spring semester ends, you go into the summer.
Correct.
When did y'all start advertising for the summer for the middle school?
I mean, every student that was part of the program at the end of the school year was sent home information about the summer program.
That, that's one of the main things, doing it probably around spring break or so, start getting that information out because they don't know what to do with the sixth grade, they don't think about it till the last minute. That was, that should be, that should help you, especially if y'all can answer the transportation question.
Yep.
I think those numbers will go up in.
We've kind of got that figured out now, we didn't initially include that, but that's what we, when we surveyed families and said, "What do you need?", that was one of the components.
How...
Six, seven, six, seven grades, eighth grades can go to the teen center.
How are the teachers selected in each school who'll be...
So we have site coordinators at each of the schools, and we do applications for those positions. But there are certified teachers that, in all of those roles.
Right, that's what I...
Any other questions?
All right, we'll move forward to the Georgia Milestones update.
So, good evening again, believe it or not, it's that time of year when we start looking at the academic results, the student achievement results from the previous school year. Historically, we've come before you, Ms. Miller and myself, this year it's Ms. Renee and I, we've come before you at, usually in the fall, to discuss the student achievement results, and we've historically presented this in the lens of the... And we've historically presented this in the lens of the CCRPI, okay? Tonight, we are not presenting CCRPI ratings, okay? Tonight, we are just simply starting with the student achievement that's occurred. And so I think each of you as board members understand that that student, those student achievement results are calculated, and we will have a overall CCRPI rating that will come at some point. We're not ready for that yet. Um, the board just released the embargo on this, the state just released the embargo on this, and so we wanted to start by just introducing what, kinda what happened here. Um, so just understand, when you look at the data here tonight, there are some components that historically happen when we calculate CCRPI versus student achievement data. When we look at CCRPI, we remove students who are full acad- who don't have a full academic year, we remove first and second-year country students, so there are some students that are pulled out. Tonight's data includes everybody, okay? So we do expect there's gonna be some fluctuation, there's gonna be some challenges or changes that occur there. I think it's safe to say for Ms. Renee and I and the rest of the cabinet that is sitting here tonight, just putting this data together, we have seen there's some successes that we are proud and happy to share. There's also some challenges and that, that we know that there's some areas of growth for the data, and I, I think it's safe to say that we're, we're on top of those and we're ready to address them. I'd also say to you, before I turn it over to Ms. Renee, please remember that two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four was a record-breaking year for Glen County schools, okay? You have to remember that. And there is some fluctuation in the scores. There's probably a two, three, two to three percent that just happens naturally when students move from grade level. There are classes that are a little bit stronger academically than others, okay? Um, so we would just ask you to kinda keep that in mind as, as we get started here this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Renee.
When you say the record-breaking, in what terms?
CCRPI. But that doesn't happen-
Had to score at some of the highest levels.
So we're gonna start with the elementary scores.
All right, the first slide you'll see is, um, the ELA achievement levels, and that is basically saying that our students are scored on a, um, scale of one to four. One being beginning learners, two being developing, three being proficient, and four being distinguished. So this is just a snapshot of a, um, our students and their achievement level and the percentage of developing learners and above. Mr. Farah did a great job of giving us, um, um, data from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five. So I wanted to kinda highlight a couple of, um, points here. In, in third grade, we did see a, a slight dip, um, from twenty-four to twenty-five, um, and, and the, the state did as well. In fourth grade, we saw some, um, gain, gains from twenty-four to twenty-five, and then fifth grade, which kinda aligns with the state, and then fifth grade, we saw a little dip in our scores. One highlight I wanted to mention here is if you look at the cohort of students from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, you're gonna see that we did make some great improvements. Uh, in third grade, we went from sixty-one percent to sixty-eight percent, and then, um, now the fifth graders this year, they're at seventy-three percent. So we are showing improvements there, um, with our achievement levels. The next slide will show you our reading status, um, and what that just means is the percentage of our students that are grade level or above. Um, the state determines that by looking at the milestones, um, scores and the questions that have, um, reading in context and vocabulary items, and it translates to a Lexile score. And the Lexile score, what they consider on level for third grade is five-twenty, for fourth grade is seven-forty, and for fifth grade is eight-thirty. So you can see there, our third grade, um, we did take a slight dip. Um, in fourth grade, we showed, um, pretty good improvement along with the state, and then in fifth grade, we had a slight dip. Again, if you look at the cohort, um, from third grade in twenty-three to fifth grade this year, you would see that we went from sixty-five percent. Um, we dipped to fifty-five percent, and then we're back up, um, this year at seventy-one percent. Any questions about the ELA?
When did we put the new, the current curriculum in place?
The benchmark curriculum for reading?
The new, the new ELA standard.
Are you talking about the standards?
No, I'm talking about the, when we switched from, um-
Lucy to benchmark, it, we're in our third year.
Okay. So all of these, we're in our third year right now?
With benchmark.
Okay. So the, the SY twenty-four and twenty-five are the two years under the benchmark curriculum.
And you know, we have new standards this year as well for ELA. All right, for math, same thing with our achievement level. It's the percentage of developing learner and above. Um, in third grade, we had a slight increase, and then, um, fourth grade, we had a slight dip, and then we also had a, a dip in, uh, fifth grade. And then our science, and that is just our fifth graders, and we have the percentage of developing learner and above. We went from twenty-four to twenty-five. We had a little, a little bit of a dip, um, in our fifth grade. Any questions about those?
What, what do you all contribute to any, uh, increases?
Well, when you look at certain schools, you have some pockets where we showed, um, a pretty good, um, increase in our scores. And I think what we attribute to is Ms. Pittman. I'm not sure if you, y'all, y'all know Ms. Pittman, but she goes in and will help fifth-grade teams and support them on different science standards and how they can implement those standards in their classroom. So I think that is a, a big piece. Um, I'll have to say that, you know, we do have our schools that are very, um, knowledgeable with their data and how to use that data to differentiate their instruction. And I think that adds to, to some of our growth as well.
Mr. Jackson, I would tell you the classroom teachers, the answer.
That is, yeah.
They're the difference maker. And where we're able to put our strongest teachers, we see the, the biggest increases.
So can you all extrapolate this material from the different schools, how the schools fare, and how our schools that, uh, how's the Twenty-First Century, how do they fare with the other schools that don't? There's in, increases in that, to see if that program works, if it helps or not?
I'll have to say that looking at Goodyear, um, they had a, a pretty good, um, increase in their scores.
Overall, or just one specific?
Overall.
Overall.
Yeah, we, we just, we're not, we weren't sharing the individual schools. Now, we, we've been breaking that down just before we start sharing the individual schools, individual grade levels in the schools. We wanted to make sure that we had, had disaggregated the, the data appropriately and make sure we, you know, we could answer any questions. So we're, we're in the process of doing that now.
I mean, we've looked at everything from test forms to schedules. Um, I will say, not to, to, um, give it away, but one thing that, one theme that we noticed, um, when we looked at the data is our lowest-level learners are not growing like our average and higher-achieving learners. We're not seeing, you would think that, you know, the, it would be easier to see that growth because the, the, the level there is lower to begin with. We're not seeing that. Um, so we are seeing that growth amongst our average or higher-achieving, so we've got some work to do to address how are we meeting those students' needs.
Are you seeing slipping from thirties and fours? No?
Um, I think as a district level, that's what we see, and when we're digging into the different schools, I think you're, you're, you're gonna see pockets of schools that, um, meet the needs of students that are the higher-level learners, maybe a little bit better than some of the, our other schools. And I think what we have felt that is the best thing is for us to ask those schools, I was at one today, and ask them, you know, "What is it that you think you're doing at your school that's making such a difference as far as growth in your higher-level learners?" Um, and this teacher, uh, this principal told me that, you know, they really look at the data and, um, achievement level descriptors and really work with their teachers on that, and I think that's a good starting point. And so we're hoping to bring the principals together to do that.
And going back to the Twenty-First Century, are you, you know, you said you took applications. How are they, are you using the lower-level kids first, getting them in first? And then, well, that's-
Yeah, we're targeting our most needy students.
Do you have a cap on how many you can take?
We do. The only place that we've met that cap, though, is Jane Makin.
It's, it's gonna be important for us, especially as we approach the, um, redistricting, um, and the misconceptions of what school I don't wanna go to school because of. We got oldest, the gap, we got all the instruments and tools, and we wanna really make sure that you all are using it so we can promote these schools that's doing well and the misconception is not. And we can show, we can prove, and that's important. Twenty-First Century, they may not be doing well right now, but the last two years, they've been growing, been showing, they have, because they have the Twenty-First Century and it's doing this and that, may be a selling point. Because right now, people have this misconception of different schools and realtors. We have to, we're gonna have to educate the realtors too. They're, they're out there promoting different schools so they can sell a house. So we just take that into consideration. Uh, when you start working these, extrapolating these, these, uh, this data here for our specific schools.
I think a lot of our schools too are having a mindset set shift from not necessarily fucking focusing so much on the achievement levels, but on their growth and their progress, and I think-
And that's a selling point.
That'll come, and you know.
That's a selling point. It's, uh, we on the trajectory of going where we wanna be in the years of data improvement.
Do you think, sorry, I'm sorry. Do you think there have been enough students that have moved to either private school or homeschooling to make an impact on the numbers? I do track how many have left.
I don't think for elementary.
We lose about, um, there's about two hundred students, I think Mr. Blackerby's looked at this, but there's about two hundred students that are less at the middle school level than the high schools. So we, we gave, we get about two hundred students back when it comes to the high schools.
Yeah, our, you can see in the numbers, our ninth grade, our ninth grade class, our grade level is the largest, well, they come back in the ninth grade, in, in many cases. But overall, without, you know, getting into a really in-depth conversation, the, the, our enrollment versus the census numbers of how many z, uh, five-year-olds to seventeen-year-olds there are in Glen County, the, the, uh, the percentage going to private school or homeschool has remained the same for almost fifteen years.
Okay, if we move to the middle school data, we start to see at sixth grade, um, we see about a two-and-a-half percent decrease from the previous year, but that same two-and-a-half percent incre- decrease occurs at the state level. So that, there, we, we did go backwards a little bit, but so did the state. I would say to the board tonight, the seventh-grade classes at the district level were extremely strong last year. We saw increases at ELA, and we're gonna see increases in seventh grade at math. So it was a strong group of students that came through our, our district last year. Um, it's really nice to see that at seventh grade ELA, though, our, we do see a slight increase in our percentage of students that are at two, three, and four. Um, whereas the state just maintained Glen County schools grew, so that's a point of celebration for us. At eighth grade, um, you do see a slight dip there. That dip coincides, you can see there was a, that same dip at the state level, though. So state's down five-and-a-half percent, we're down five-and-a-half percent. One interesting thing, I think, Ms. Sams, you asked this question. One interesting thing that we did include in the data tonight, we did go back and look, okay? This is the percentage of students that are at levels two, three, and four. When we look at the percentage of students in Glen County schools at eighth grade ELA that are at just three and four, we see that percentage over forty-one percent. The state average is thirty-nine percent. So we're above the state average when we look at the higher levels of scoring that are occurring in ELA. So we've started to break it down that way as well. When we look at, um, sixth grade math, we were happy to see an increase there as well. We know that new math standards came in school year twenty-four, and we see that jump from twenty-three to twenty-four. Well, guess what? We continued to figure it out, and we saw another increase there in, in school year twenty-five. I've said to you already tonight that our seventh-grade ma- class across the district was strong. It's where we saw a six percent increase. We don't see that type of gain anywhere else at the middle school level, but it happened in seventh-grade math. In eighth-grade math, um, I think it's fair to say, we pretty much basically maintained where we were at, okay? Um, and where we are at is basically where the state's at as well. So, any questions on the middle school pieces?
Well, similar to the sixth grade in math, we maintained about where we were, and, and the state rose a little bit, but there's still seven, eight points under our-
Yeah, we-
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
On the wrong one?
Yeah.
There you go, I'm sorry.
I was, I was just saying, sixth grade maintained from twenty-four to twenty-five, and the state went up slightly, but we're significantly more than the state in that sixth-grade category. So then we fall kind of right where the state is in twenty-four with seventh graders. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think this data looks better than the ELA data that we're seeing.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause in seventh grade, you see that from, we went from seventy-three point seven-four to seventy-nine point five-seven. That's right at six percent, right, where the state only grew two percent.
I think one thing, and you've talked about cohorts, you know, varying in their scoring, I think pretty consistently, I'll have to go back, I didn't take a tally or anything. But the, I guess, last year's eighth-grade cohort did tend to make gains through their progression of middle school in almost every case.
And when we get to the high school, you're gonna, that's, that point is gonna be yes. Yeah.
You just, you just pulled the high school scores.
I didn't say it, he said it.
So when we look at eighth-grade science, we do see some increases there, okay? So when we went from SY twenty-three, you see about a three percent increase, fifty-nine point four to sixty-two point three. Um, so that's positive to see. Uh, and again, Glen County schools is about five percent higher than the state average in science. Things got a little bit interesting in, in social studies, and, you know, you asked different people, Mr. Jackson, you asked a really good question. What do you attribute to what's going on here? Everybody that you talk to says that the social studies, the eighth-grade social studies test is another reading exam. It's not a measure of what facts and what content students know. They have to be able to read. And the answers to those questions are somewhere in that test, and students have to be able to read those passages and figure those answers out. And so that kinda goes along. I know we've spent some time talking about our flex period and trying to build those foundational reading and math skills because we know they, they, they bleed over into the other subject areas, okay? And so that cross-curricular instruction is really important for us. But we did see a slight decrease in social studies. At the high school level, I just, before I put the slides up there, I just wanted to be known, when you, when you get to the high school level and you get to be somewhere in the, um, high eighties, low nineties, it's really hard to continue to see the large jumps, okay? But I'm gonna try to speak to, to what happened. And I'm gonna start with Algebra I. So going back to what we said before, in school year twenty-four, we had new standards, right? So that's the orange bar in the middle on the far-left-hand side. Well, if you look at the gain that we made from SY twenty-four to SY twenty-five, you're looking at almost a six-and-a-half percent increase there. And so the question is, what happened? Well, guess what? We figured out what the new standards looked like, and we figured out what we had, students had to do to be successful when they took that test, and so that's where you're seeing that gain. When you look at American Lit, two years ago, Brunswick, uh, Glen Academy had a significant. I know we weren't gonna talk about individual schools, but I'm gonna do it. Glen Academy had a significant increase two years ago. Brunswick High had a significant increase last year. When you start to have those two sets of teachers, our American Lit teachers working together in our PLCs. And lessons are being shared and how, the different assessments that they're using and the different strategies. This is what happens. And so again, we see a large increase in the American Lit scores that came out. Biology, slight little decrease there, okay? Um, you know, the, I'm not exactly sure, we saw obviously the year before a nice increase from twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, we're still well above the state average. It's one of those though, now we're hovering at the high eighties. You know, we saw a slight little dip. US history, um, US history, we're also down a little bit. And this is where I, why I started with the whole, you know, please remember we are comparing student assessment results and not CCRPI, okay? Please remember you as a board, there are, last year we saw an extremely large number of students who took the AP US history class at the high school level. Okay, so just think about traditionally, historically, what type of student takes an AP class, right? If they took the AP class, they didn't take the EOC. Okay, but when we go to factor in and calculate CCRPI, if they got an A in the class, they get a four on the, on the CCRPI, which is a point and a half. So when we factor in what's happened here, we're very positive. Well, you as a board member may say, oh, that looks a little bit lower than it was. Yes, it is, but if we put it in perspective of what's gonna happen when we factor in those results to CCRPI, we're gonna be well over a hundred when it hits that mark, okay? Cause we didn't have those higher level students took, because we pushed them for that rigor to take the AP course, so they weren't part of the EOC calculation.
And I think it's become less so in the past few years, but it used to be not, not the US history, but the government class. You had to take the US government class before you could take the AP US government class. And I know that prerequisite's gone. Same with biology, you don't necessarily, or, or do, maybe that one's still there, you have to take biology before AP. So sometimes you're seeing the students that would be AP students in a subject still have to take the prerequisite, but other times they don't.
You're exactly right.
So it's, it's, like you said, with the US history, that one is one where there's no prerequisite for that AP, so.
So if we're, if you're looking at an advanced or honor level history class, we, we funnel you to that AP class.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Um, and then the last slide here is the reading status, as Ms. Renee mentioned earlier, that's the Lexile level. You see a six percent increase for at the high school level, okay? And that, I think, that coincides with that same increase in gains that we saw in the American Lit class. So students' reading ability is well above the rest of the state here in Glen County.
And just to go back to what you said before, so you see Glen County at eighty-six percent last year and you think, well, these are high school students. You would hope that would be a hundred percent. But you do have groups of students that this might not be their native language, they, you know, maybe first year at work. And also does this include students that are in some of the special ed programs or where do they fall?
GAA is not.
Not in this, okay, okay. So, I mean, it's almost like even at the high school level, we've got a little bit, you know, that we could catch up. At least certain segments of the student population.
But it's certainly a point of celebration, I mean, you look at where we are in terms of reading stats and the rest of the state, we're eighteen, we're eighteen percentage points above the state.
Yeah, yeah. I think that is good, yeah.
And I think your, your high school scores are so good that it makes you raise an eyebrow about your middle and elementary, right? Cause we're, we're accustomed to being above the state level, not right at it or below it, you know what I mean? I think so, I think that's, that's the, that's the bar we need to set. And we, we don't necessarily wanna compare ourselves to the rest of Georgia, we wanna be even better than that, I guess. But, I mean, those are great numbers in high school and we can, and we can live with and understand dips, you know, in your state in the eighties. I mean, it's impressive, but it's hard to close that gap as you, you have high achievement, it's harder to get even more gains out of that, we, we understand that for sure. Um, but I think we would like to stay focused, you know, on, and I, I don't know this, I mean, we've been talking about this a long time, but, you know, having, having. Either scores at or below the state level, that's, we gotta, you know, that's kind of an area of focus and it was like across the board in elementary and middle, right, for most of them, so, um. Those are great high school numbers, they're very impressive.
Ms. Sams, you asked about curriculum. We, this year we do have new ELA standards and we spent some time last spring examining what the new standards ask students to do at the, specifically at the middle school level. We had adopted the HMH curriculum and we felt like maybe teachers were teaching to the curriculum and not to the standard. Okay, so we did spend some time looking at it. We have introduced a new curriculum, we've introduced the Common Lit three sixty curriculum at, um, the middle school level this year. In hopes to do like Mr. Halsey's saying, also set that bar a little bit higher in terms of the rigor and what students are experiencing. When students get to that milestones assessment, we want them to feel like that was easy, right, compared to what we, compared to what we were doing.
Sure.
Um, I would also just add, we've looked at that, that, that social studies, eighth grade social studies assessments, uh, uh, a little bit interesting for us. That is the last assessment we give at the middle school level. It is the assessment that comes closest to the end of the school year, I'm just being honest here. And so we're, we've also had some discussions about how do we maintain students making sure they give it everything they have when they get to that last assessment. Although they're, you're staring down, you know, the end of the school year and everything else going on. Although you've, if you're an eighth grade student, you may have already taken three other milestones tests. Um, Dr. Nelson at Rizley says a lot of times, we can't be preparing to run a, a half marathon or a marathon if we're only running five Ks along the way. We wanna make sure we're, we're increasing student stamina so that they're prepared and ready to, to face that. So sometimes there's other things, I only mention that because there's a lot of different, to Mr. Jackson's questions, there's a lot of different factors that play into student achievement results.
Well, it's true with any testing, it's a snapshot and you don't know, you know, was that the student's best day, the worst day? It's hard to pinpoint everything.
I hate to go back, but could you list the 21st century elementary schools that, that will be serviced?
Altama.
Uh-huh.
Goodyear.
Uh-huh.
And Burroughs-Mallett.
Okay.
Yep.
And the middles?
All four.
All of them?
All four.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the test data?
All right, we're gonna move to Dr. Deppenhardt with the CTA Perkins grant.
Just do better than the state, that's all I ask. That means you're doing a good job.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to inform you of the State of Georgia CTAE grants. As well as to get your approval to accept the FY twenty-six federal grants for CTAE that we've received. So just a quick snapshot, these are by and large the state grants to give you an idea of what we've received. Uh, we've received a hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-three. That funds the extended day salaries for twenty-five CTAE teachers at both Brunswick High and Glen Academy, as well as, um, GECA. We received four thousand six hundred and four in the extended year grant. That, that money is used to fund the extended year for our two work-based learning coordinators that are housed at GECA. We received eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars for the agriculture extended day. That money funds the extended day for two ag teachers at GECA, as well as one ag teacher at Jaymacon Middle School. And then likewise, the ag extended year, the same three teachers, we received fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty to fund their extended year. They have many activities and camps that they do throughout the summer. We received thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the youth apprenticeship grant. That helps offset the salary of the youth apprenticeship coordinator. And then we received twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine in the CTAE supervision. That helps offset the cost of the CTAE director's salary. On to the federal grant side, we received twenty thousand dollars in Perkins Plus for our size district. This is the, the maximum amount that we can receive. This helps offset the cost of our EOPA testing. Unfortunately, our EOPA testing has grown so much over the last couple of years, this only covers about sixty percent of it. I, I anticipate we'll spend about thirty-five thousand dollars this year on, on EOPA testing alone. Moving on to the federal, uh, last federal grant, it's gonna be the Perkins Improvement Grant, this is our largest one. Um, this year we're gonna receive one hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. This is actually eight thousand dollars more than we received this time last year, so about a five percent increase. Um, the way I plan to break that down is we'll spend approximately forty-four thousand dollars on instructional travel. This is the CTAE teachers going out with their CTSOs to competitions and leadership development events. We'll spend about thirteen thousand five hundred on instructional equipment, this is the non-computer equipment. And then we'll spend another twenty-four thousand five hundred on technological equipment, which is gonna be your cameras and your computer items. We'll spend about nineteen thousand dollars on instructional registration. Part of that includes the overage for the EOPA testing that we'll be doing this year. Again, I anticipate we'll have about eight hundred pathway completers this year, so I do expect that to go up. For staff development and travel, we'll spend about thirty-four thousand dollars on travel and eight thousand dollars on instructional registration. And then finally, we have four thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars set aside for travel for the CTA director, as well as five hundred dollars for, um, CTA director's registration. A note on that, the CTA director's expenses are limited at a maximum of five percent of the total grant allocated. Right now we're sitting at about three and a half percent, so we're well below that, subject to your questions.
How many of McIntosh students do we have?
Uh, currently this semester, we have sixteen, sir.
What program do they normally?
It, it's a mix, we have, the two biggest are gonna be healthcare and welding. And then the rest sprinkle, we have a, you know, a couple in engineering, one in collision, they, they sprinkle throughout the building. Construction would be another big one for McIntosh.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Waters.
Good evening, uh, using the school safety grant money that Ms. Cody discussed earlier. We would like to request for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of three new vehicles from Wade Ford at a cost of one hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred and ten dollars. And this will continue to replace our old fleet with newer cars.
Will this complete the replacement of the fleet or do we still?
I think the plan is as long as we continue to get the grant, we're gonna do a couple each year.
Okay.
Just to kind of funnel the cars out as we try to, try to do our school buses as well now.
Right, okay.
We still have a couple of vehicles that are fifteen plus years old or maybe older than that, that we're trying to get off, get off the inventory. All right, Ms. Haywood, student attendance.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight we'd like to give you an update on the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, student dis- uh, student attendance, um, for the year. We typically provide you this report, um, at the semester and at the end of the year. And we break it out by school, but I'd like to, to start by telling you, we are seeing a significant improvement in our overall student attendance. Um, last school year for the twenty-three, twenty-four, I'll start with twenty, um, twenty-three. Glen County was at nineteen point eight percent of our students overall were missing ten percent or more of school. Compared to the state at twenty-two point six percent. In twenty-four, Glen County was at nineteen point two percent overall compared to the state at twenty-one point three. However, this past school year for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, fifteen point nine percent. So we have increased our attendance from nineteen point two percent of kids missing ten percent or more to fifteen point nine percent. Compared to the state at nineteen point five percent. I would attribute a lot of the improvement to our students' attendance. Two, schools have made a concerted effort on focusing on attendance. One of the things that we've done, and part of this has been proactively because of some of, um, legislation, Senate Bill one twenty-three, which is focusing on, on chronic absenteeism. We have a school social worker who is dedicated to attendance initiatives. Our schools have also implemented school attendance review teams that are going to be meeting monthly for problem solving. And putting processes in place to monitor and address barriers to attendance for stu- students that they've identified. Who have, um, identified issues with chronic absenteeism. We've also established strong community partnerships with the solicitor's office and with juvenile court. Um, we've implemented this past year with the solicitor's, um, office, the mandatory education intervention program. Where parents are coming in and participating in parenting classes and doing more of proactive ways of addressing, um, their students not coming to school rather than punitive. And we've seen an improvement with regard to that. Also, our juvenile court has been coming into schools and having truancy panels and meeting with students and parents on the proactive end to address attendance. We've also been providing more professional learning to our administrators and to our tenants clerks at schools. Explaining the difference between compulsory attendance, which is the state law, which is about truancy versus chronic absenteeism. The main difference between the two is chronic absenteeism is when a student misses ten percent or more of school, regardless of whether it is an excused absence or not. Versus compulsory attendance is the law that requires students between the ages of six and sixteen to a, to attend school or a home study program for a minimum of a hundred and eighty days. And of course, they can't miss more than five days unexcused. So we've really been very strategic and very intentional in trying to make sure that we are addressing that on the proactive and the, on the proactive end. Versus on the reactive end at each school. So comparatively to last year, we've seen an improvement at each school with regard to, um, attendance. If you look, if we compare the twenty-three, twenty-four to this report at this time of the year. So, um, we just wanted to make sure that we provided this report to you as we've done each year. And again, give you some of the initiatives and activities that we've been doing across the district to address attendance as a district. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there supposed to be totals or percentage averages in the blue lines?
Ma'am.
Uh, is there supposed to be something in the blue line?
No, those are just separated out.
Okay, so we, as a elementary school band, we don't have a total percentage?
No, ma'am, I didn't do it by the total because, um, the reason we didn't do it that way, the first column is based on the cumulative attendance or cumulative enrollment. Which basically means students at any time that were enrolled in that school. So it's not based on the total enrollment, but based on cumulative. So I didn't want it to be misleading to have an average when the numbers are based on students that at any time were enrolled at that school. So for example, any student that was enrolled at Altama that did not miss any school would fall into that category of zero days. Any student that fell into the ten or more during any time of their enrollment would fall into that number. But they may also fall in at Glendale because they may have been enrolled at Glendale at some time during the school year. So that, then if I added a total, it would, there may be duplicate students in that.
Okay. So are you saying if there was a student that attended school A and missed ten days and then transferred and attended school B and missed ten days? That same person's gonna show up in the two different categories?
Okay, that's correct.
Do we have a lot of people transferring out or into Glendale, contributing to that number?
We, we have, we, we had a lot of issues with attendance last year, yes, sir, and we did have, um, transient population.
And we have, um, I see that, we have communities and schools, uh, based at, uh, Goodyear and Burroughs-Mallett.
Yes, sir.
And I know attendance behavior academic is one of their things that they really try to, um, grasp and help the parents. Have they been successful with that?
Last year, we, in January, we put in some attendance incentives and we started to see a big improvement with regard to attendance at those schools. Um, we work very closely with, um, communities and schools, particularly at those schools where they are housed. Um, we meet with them monthly, um, they meet with Ms. Renee, Mr. Benson and I, um, on a regular basis. And we talk about what those incentives are with, and they actually talk about, um, specific families and different things that we've done with those specific families, so yes, sir.
So you guys just started incentive last spring?
Yes.
So this will be the first year of the full?
Correct, correct. And again, we've made a, a true intention of making sure we're focusing on attendance going into this school year, particularly because of the Senate bill. But also because we noticed that attendance was, was becoming an issue last year, which I think is attributed to. which I think is attributed to when we see the improvement in our overall chronic absenteeism rate going from nineteen point five to fifteen point nine for last school year.
Well, even go further back than that, if you go to twenty-twenty-two, you know, we were, we were at twenty-nine percent.
Twenty-nine percent as a district.
We were at twenty-nine percent, now we're at fifteen point nine percent. So we've seen a thirteen percent decrease since twenty-twenty-two.
Are letters still sent home periodically?
Yes.
How, how, how often do y'all send those home?
So we make phone calls, we have an attendance protocol. We make phone calls, courtesy calls at third. Absence letters start going home at five, seven. Attendance meetings are held at five and seven, and then at ten. And then based on if they are unexcused absences, that's when a truancy citation is established at ten. And our truancy officer works with the school. And then they, of course, cut those warrants and work with either the solicitor's office or juvenile court pending on the age of the student. But yes, ma'am, we do still send letters. The compulsory attendance law requires that we make two, two notifications to the parents at five, seven. And we do that meeting at seven as a courtesy and then at ten.
Yeah, I think some of this points to, we always talk about our schools are impacted by, you know, the people in the school buildings, they're, can be impacted by the community members or by the parents. And this is just one place, you've got to look to the parents on this. I know there's extenuating circumstances for sickness for some kids, but this is, this is a parent issue. And, you know, it's interesting because are they going to be the same parents that turn around and say, why is my kid not doing well in school? There's sometimes just a disconnect of, well, I don't want to send my child to school today and wait, they have a bad grade two weeks later. I mean, I think everybody wants our, I would think as a general population, we all want our schools and our kids to do well, but the school can't fight this battle. If they don't come to the door, it's, it's not something we can really do. So I applaud efforts to try to get the stu, the parents educated. I know, I mean myself, when my oldest transitioned from preschool, the pre-K class was full. So he went to a little pre-K class somewhere else and then transitioned to kindergarten at elementary school. And I don't know, there was one day, I don't even remember the circumstances, but it just all of a sudden hit me like, oh, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have kept him out of school that day. You know, it's not preschool anymore. This is real school and it's kindergarten, but it's real school. I mean, we learn to read and do all kinds of things. And we expect the kids, kids to be on grade level by third grade with their reading. And if forty percent of the kids are missing ten or more days, I know there's a hundred and seventy-eight days in our school calendar, but any amount of absence that is not absolutely necessary impacts the student learning.
And to your point, Ms. Ms. Samz, that's one of the things that we're really trying to do is communicate to parents the importance of attendance. I mean, expectations, not just to parents, but to students and emphasizing the value of daily attendance. Because when students are missing school, that's impacting their ability to learn.
It is. And when they get behind, it's harder to catch up. And eventually, they just give up. Because you can't climb out of that hole that they've gotten into if they're, yeah. And, and they just, they give up and say, whatever, you know? So we don't want our kids to get to that point. And we need help ensuring that they don't as far as, you know, attendance goes.
If they miss more than ten days, can we exempt them by the end of course test?
Can you, can you take this chart and you get granular on your school performance? Do they correlate?
I'm sure.
I mean, a hundred percent, I would think.
I looked at one school that was fifty-four.
You see the highest percentages of students ten or more are the same schools that have the longest student attendance.
That is very eye opening for me. I mean, I looked and I wanted to make sure I was reading it right, but we had one elementary school there that fifty-four percent of the students had ten or more absences.
Yes, sir.
I guarantee you that when you come back with the granular data per school on the milestones, that's going to be glaring.
Yep.
That's wow.
Can't teach them if they're not there.
If they're not there.
Yeah.
And if they're not there, they can't be successful in school and overall will be.
How does our overall attendance percentage, what was it, fifteen?
Fifteen point nine percent.
Yeah, the data, the way it's here, since they're counted twice in certain way, they counted, the overall is fifteen point nine percent.
Do we know how that compares to the state?
Yes.
Yes. Nineteen point five is the state of Georgia for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're at fifteen point nine.
And if you mentioned that already, I apologize.
Oh, no, it's not, no, it's not.
So we're doing good relative to the state, but it's still.
And I'll tell you, compared to districts around us, we're doing relatively well.
We saw it, the, the change really occurred in two thousand nineteen. We always blame everything on COVID, but before COVID, it was, I'll have the numbers wrong, it was twelve point seven. The next year was eight point five. Even during the COVID year, it was sixteen percent. The year after, when we all returned to school, it jumped to twenty-nine percent.
And when was the record years in performance, CCRP, I?
Which was the year after that. That next year, we dropped back down to nineteen percent and it's been, it's been tailing off since then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Seals, staff attendance.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting the staff attendance. Just as some high note, higher notes of comparison, the overall teacher average stayed relatively the same as the year before. At the elementary level, you'll see ninety-five point seven six percent. At the middle school level, ninety-five point seven percent. And the middle, excuse me, the high schools, you'll see ninety-six point zero eight percent. So overall, the attendance looks good in regards to teachers coming to school, teaching their students and being there for their students. Of course, as with anything, if there's been some concerns, we definitely work to address those things. I was amazed at some of the conversations that have already been happening at some of our schools already regarding staff attendance. But overall, our teachers are coming to school. And we can definitely state that, you know, good instruction can't happen if the teacher is not there. And teachers are the experts, not just because of content, but because they know their students as well, too. And so we are thankful that our, that the majority of our teachers are coming to school and teaching and being there with their students on a regular basis. Do you have any questions for me about what you're seeing?
I'd like to know what we're doing with Glen Middle and Altama, being at fifty percent, ten days or more absent. That's significant. My question is, what are we doing about it?
Well, I can tell you that at some of the schools, there have been one-on-one conversations with those particular teachers. There have als, I also want to remind you that this, this data also includes people who have had babies. So of course, they're going to be out ten or more days. If they've had surgery, they'll be out more than ten days. So if they've had cancer or have to be out for chemo, those are also in here as well, too. So I want to make sure we understand that while there are some people.
The numbers are, when you put all the schools together, they all have the same.
It's glaring. You're right, they do.
It's obviously different, so.
You're absolutely right, there's a difference there. And there's been some conversations already with principals. The teachers who have those days, it's amazing, those, that particular attendance, it's amazing that the principals already know who those people are. Some of those people have left our district. When I looked specifically at their names, some of them no longer work for us. I did share some of that data with the corresponding supervisor for those particular schools. But they have already had those conversations regarding attendance with some of their staff, with their, with their principals and with those staff members. So that is something that we are definitely working on. But by and large, the majority of our teachers are coming to school when they're there. And I appreciate that.
I was getting trouble on this one, so I'll be quiet.
Have we seen any improvement in the more than ten day absences?
We actually have. At the elementary, at the elementary level, we've seen a slight increase in regards to overall attendance. It has improved there. A slight increase as well at the high school level is, well, actually, the high school level stayed the same. And our programs, our programs and our middle schools have a slight dip. Those are the two that had the dip.
Well, and this will probably correlate, but I'm, I'm just talking about the ten or more absent percentages. Like, you know, they're, they're pretty close together at thirty-one, thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty-seven. So in that thirty-one to thirty-seven range, is that lower than what we've seen in a few years? Those ranges are about the same?
It's within range. It's within range except at the program level. It's within range. For example, the high school is exactly like it was last school year. At the middle school level, we had a slight decrease this, of course, because of there's, you have the forty-eight percent and the forty-five percent there. And then you had a better attendance at the elementary school level. We even had some schools that had some significant decreases. Like one school went from fifty-one percent to twenty-six percent.
That's very good.
Yes, that's very good. And it's amazing because that school has, that school saw a lot of growth as well in regards to their student achievement.
You can't, you can't take those two factors away from each other.
That particular school saw a lot of growth in regards to their student achievements. So I think that also says how engaged the teachers are with their work, how vested they are in, you know, in seeing their students grow as well, too. I think a lot can be attributed to the administration at that school as well.
Did that school have a high turnover percentage also?
Actually, lower than it's been in previous years.
POC figured it out. They're working together.
Any other questions on this staff attendance? All right, that concludes our agenda. We do have a need for executive session for tribunal and land. And personnel, sorry.
And legal as well. So I hear a motion to go into executive session for tribunal appeal, land, legal and personnel. Move by Mr. Jackson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dodger. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Shenandoah six zero. At some time. Six seventeen.
Her personnel has been very long.
That's fine. That's fine.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee. Return to open session at not 7:06, 7:08. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six zero. Anything else? Any motion adjourned? Move by Mr. Jackson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee again. All those in favor? Six zero. Can discuss the motion to adjourn.